I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary.
President Schmitz and Schley are excused.
Board correspondent.
Okay, um, let's see. At the state level, they are looking, there's two bills that came out of the executive session, which means then that they're going to recommend them for legislation to be passed by the full assembly. One is about the financial literacy, requires one-half credit of personal finance literacy for high school graduation, which I think is a good thing because some of these kids don't even know how to run a checkbook.
Yeah.
You know, and.
More education.
And that's important. So I think that's a good thing. And then the other one is posting the child abuse and neglect reporting hotline in school buildings. So that'll, that'll be going up for, to the full assembly. There's another committee meeting that, I found this kind of interesting, it's, would allow school board members to be volunteer bus drivers. And I, as a school board member, I've been volunteering just about every, since I got on the board, but not as a, you know, not as a bus driver, obviously. So I.
I thought you were volunteer.
Yeah, yeah, I've been, yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, I've done a lot of stuff, so I've got to know why that's different than regular volunteering. Maybe there's, I suppose you've got to look at your driver's license, your past driving history and all of that. So that's, they're looking at that. That tells me that people are scrambling, districts are scrambling for bus drivers, you know. So, looking at that. We talked a little bit about the library aid last, last, last month. A record fifty-two point, fifty-two million dollars is available to school districts. But as always, yeah, as always, when, when the government gives you stuff like that, you know, there's always a, of restrictions on it. Purchases are limited to library books, instructional materials, purchases for school library media programs. And then however, all these purchases that you make have to be submitted to the DPI for their approval before you can make them.
Oh, okay.
So that's, you know, that's all that is. We talked a little bit about the money that the state has. In six point nine billion more than anticipated by the end of this June. So it's like six point, yeah, six point nine billion dollars. The Republicans who control the legislature are assuring people that they will continue to craft a responsible budget that is made for Wisconsin. So when you flip the page, go down to this one, okay. The joint finance committee is looking to start the budget, and they're going to remove five hundred and fifty, five hundred and forty-five items of the governor's plan. Obviously, I'm not going to read all five hundred and forty, forty-five, but you know, there's changes. They want to throw out some things to the general school aids and revenue limits. The choice charter and open enrollment are, would be affected. School district operations and curriculum will be affected. So you know, we'll only see how that, how that budget is going to turn out. And then, lastly, there were some things that couldn't get through on their own. Let's see, what was, it was reporting crimes that happened in school, remember that?
Oh, yeah.
And then, you know, we said, you know, that, that would be of undertaking, especially for some schools that have a huge issue. So that, that couldn't get passed on, there on its own. So they're kind of putting that into the shared revenue plan for local governments. So they're kind of lumping it in. It would be a mandate in their revenue package. So that's how they'll get it done. I believe that is it.
Questions for Pat? Anyone? If there's any comments. Thank you, Pat. The board sees report.
Well, I had my first meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I learned there's a lot to learn. I know that Nick reported about a year ago that they had hired a new agency administrator, and so she spent this past year cleaning up a lot of stuff, particularly financially. On our agenda later is to approve our contract amount with them. I know that they have found areas in which they were not charging schools for the full expense of what it was costing them to have people here. So they look to correct that moving forward, although they don't really have a way to, you know, back charge for the things that they had failed to. They also just hired a new director of business services who had, was maybe on his fourth day when we had our meeting together. Our next meeting is on Wednesday, June fourteenth. That's a dinner meeting in Door County that I can bring a guest to. So if there's anybody that's interested in meeting folks that work for CISA and kind of getting a feel for that, I'd be happy to take someone along with me. And I handed out those blue sheets that talk about a couple of different mental health opportunities that CISA is offering. One side has three different things on it that are more targeting students, and the other side is one full event that is a behavior and mental health summit. And everybody I handed it to said, oh, we're already registered for that. So I'm glad that we're taking advantage of that opportunity. And that's all I have.
All right. Questions or comments for Jennifer? Thank you, Jennifer. And Matt is not with us. So we will, we have no misconceptions or rumors. Did anyone sign in to speak, Shelley?
No.
Moving forward here, board president announcements.
Well, all I'd like to say is that this was just a wonderful week, I tell you. The open house, or I think it was, they called it, what, project demonstration?
Project showcase.
Project showcase for Elgoma Venture Academy was wonderful, like it always is. And anybody who has not taken advantage of going to one of their, do you do it twice a year? It's just phenomenal because the students show what they're working on, and it's all laid out. They talk about what they're doing, and it's just, it's inspiring. And then, of course, the awards ceremony where, you know, a lot of really well-serving kids got their scholarships and awards. And the National Honor Society, you know, with the new inductees. And then, of course, the crowning glory is always graduation for me. I mean, that's what we're all here for. And, and we had another very nice graduation ceremony yesterday, and graduated a bunch of kids that are going to go out and represent us very well, I think. So, yeah, good week. Good week for education.
All right. After that, administration report, starting with you, Jesse.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Have our monthly budget update that I'll go through. And then two other items I want to discuss related that are timely to kind of the time of the year, but go through open enrollment and our fund balance as well. So, so some key takeaways from tonight is we're going to look and see where our current budget is at. And we've been doing this the last couple of months. I'll give an overview of open enrollment, overview of fund balance, and then I'll give an update to our pack of pups childcare, and also speak about our graduating class that graduated yesterday. So again, the same slide you've seen before. When you look at your budget report that's handed out in front of you, when you're looking at the revenues, the minus is actually a positive. And when you're looking at the E's or the expenditures, those are going to be negative. So it's backwards, basically. So right now, our general operating fund or Fund 10, we've collected about seventy-three percent of our expected revenue, and we've spent about sixty. We anticipate from now to end of June, we will get the rest of those revenues collected from the state. For Fund 27, which is special education, we've collected about twenty-five percent of our expected revenue, but we've spent seventy-one percent. Again, the expected revenue has come in very late for this, for special education. But however, we continue to spend throughout the year for salaries and costs associated with students. So it will be, this is one fund that we'll be watching closely because whatever does not balance out at the end of the fiscal period here in Ju, end of June, then we take that money from Fund 10 and cover the rest of that cost. So. And then for Fund 50, food service, we've collected about seventy-one percent of our expected revenue and have spent about seventy-six percent of expenditures. And then the last one is Fund 80, or community services. We've taken in about everything we could, so ninety-eight percent of our expected revenue, and we spent about eighty-six of our projected expenditures. So we are on track as far as budget. And we'll talk a little bit later on, but we did have a finance committee meeting last week and went over some of the numbers. And I'm feeling very confident with where the budget is at for this point in the year. So. All right, open enrollment. This is one item that we're going to be approving later on in the agenda, so I thought it was timely to discuss this. Students have many choices right now in public education, whether it's from district to district, or if your district has multiple schools, they can choose to intra-district transfer as well. So open enrollment is really when students are able to attend public school in a district other than where they reside in. So an open enrollment application is needed for that. And the first window is really from February to end of April. So we've closed our first window. There's an alternative application that starts now here shortly, and will basically run through until the start of the school year, through the summer. So. So they can apply for, parents can apply for many different reasons that they feel for open enrollment. Our current numbers of open enrollment in, we are looking at our numbers for next year, for 23, 24, to be very comparable to previous years. Because you can see how it's broken down for students open enrolling in. Right now, we have six for next year. We had six this year, eight in 21, 22, eight in 20, 21, and three in 19, 20. And once you're open enrolled in, you're automatically in. You don't have to keep applying year after year. So these are additional students that have opened enrolled in every year. Open enrollment out, one thing I just want to make a note of is with the partnership that we are doing with Rural Virtual Academy, or RVA, you'll hear, has allowed us to count the nine students that are currently attending RBA as our students for next year. So right now, they're counted as open enrolled out. RBA is under the Medford School District, so those students are going to be considered Elgoma School District students, and so we can count them as our revenue then. So these are open enrollment numbers out. I'm happy to report out for 23, 24, right now, it's looking like we have fewer students open enrolling out of the district. And you can see the breakdown. So eight for right now that are for next year, for 23 and 24, as compared to fourteen for this year, 20 in 21, 22, fourteen students in 20 and 21, and twenty students in 19 and 20. Again, families do not have to commute, apply for this every year. Once you're in, you're in. So when you do the math and you see the number of students that are open enrolling out, and you add those all together, that adds up over, over the years. So. Hopefully, eight students is, we're heading in the right direction because we want to keep our students in their district. So. You know, this chart's a little hard to see on the bottom, but this is putting some financial pieces to the students. And so you can see historical data, but going all the way back from seventeen and eighteen. That first column or the first row here is open enrollment revenue in. So these are the amounts that we took in for the number of kids that were open enrolled in from outside of our district. This bottom one here is open enrolled out, so these are expenditures. And you can see the difference between the years on how much we've been paying out every year versus how much we're getting in. You can see where we're budgeted for next year, where we're looking at for 23, 24. So.
Jesse, does that include this private school vouchers when you?
This is not, this is not vouchers. This is just open enrollment out into other public schools.
Okay.
So looking at the, this a little differently, when you subtract basically those two numbers for open enrollment in and the, when we're open enrollment out as terms of aid, we are considered a negative open enrolled district. So meaning we're paying out more than what we're receiving in. So you can see the graphic of what, what we've been paying out, basically, when you subtract the two. Another way to look at it is over the number of years, and you see the years were cut off on the bottom. But the last one where you see the forty-six and eighty-nine, that last column, that's twenty-two, so this current school year. The yellow is pupil transfers in, and the red is the transfers out. So.
A lot of these kids have not ever been in our school, correct? Have not ever been in our school district?
That could be the case, yes. A lot of families will open and roll out when they are entering that 4K, and then they stay year after year. Again, there's many different reasons why families open and roll out, whether it's parents' jobs, they work in a certain area. Maybe they have family members that live in that area that are able to watch their children. Childcare is a big one. So. This chart here compares Elgoma to other districts around us, all within CISA seven. So you can see kind of the numbers of enrollment in, open enrolled in, and open enrolled out to other districts.
It's like people really want to get out of Minnesota.
So why are some of them schools so much higher in than out? And they're, they're, I think they would be considered rural schools.
Yeah.
Do they offer more, or?
Could be many reasons. Could be course offerings. I can just say.
Or athletics.
Athletics is a big one, yep. I know Luxembourg Casco, they, during COVID, they partner with Green, or neighbor with Green Bay School District. So when Green Bay was still under COVID protocols of virtual learning, a lot of families chose to open and roll into LC because they were in person. So.
And of course, we've got a lake on one side of us. This does not help a certain, you know, in terms of just enrollment numbers and access to Elgoma in general. So.
You can only draw from three sides.
That's true. So. Any questions about open enrollment? Move on to our fund balance. Fund balance is a term that's used, basically what funds or assets we own versus how much our liability is, or how much we owe. So assets include cash, receivables, liabilities, and accounts payable. So a fund balance is basically a way that the district will keep money that is used for kind of like a rainy day. That's the best way I can compare it to our, kind of how we keep our budget, right, as personal. And so a fund balance is used when there's large expenditures that come up unexpectedly. We don't want to have to use short-term borrowing because that hurts your credit score as a district. There's interest that's accrued for those. And so if we can keep a healthy fund balance, that allows us to cover those costs that come up unexpectedly. So.
A couple of screens ago, you, you know, we've taken twenty-five percent in, but we spent seventy-five percent. Well, we've been able to do that because we had the fund balance. We don't have to, you know, short-term borrow, which.
Correct.
Is costly.
Correct, yep. So positive fund balance represents a financial resource available to finance expenditures of the following fiscal period, whereas a deficit, you would have to do that borrowing then because you don't have enough revenue to cover your expenditures, obviously. According to DPI, a district with an appropriate fund balance can avoid excessive short-term borrowing, which we have as a district, accumulate sufficient reserves to make distinguished purchases or cover unforeseen expenditures, and then demonstrate financial stability and preserve or enhance the bond, its bond rating for the district. So we actually have board policy on fund balance. The policy is sixty-two thirty-five, if anyone ever wants to read it. And we require the fund balance for our general operating fund or Fund 10, which is the largest account that we have, to be twenty percent or higher of the preceding year's Fund 10 expenditures. So twenty percent, that's that key number that we look for. And I'll show you here in a little bit what we're currently at. So. This chart shows the district's Fund 10 balance over the last couple of years as a percentage of the Fund 10 expenditures. So that line that you see is the fund balance as a percent of expenditures, and then the gray boxes are actually our fund balance, or how much is, we have in those accounts. So. So you can kind of see we've plateaued, or we spiked at twenty-one, twenty-two. We've kind of been going down using our fund balance. So. And I'll show you why that is in a little bit here. So it's important to note that the balances really are recorded at the end of the fiscal year. So end of June is when our fiscal period runs out, and we start our new fiscal period on July first. So we have to report these balances to the DPI and to the state. So some of the amounts that you see listed here will fluctuate a little bit, but this is currently where we're at as of this morning. So the current fund balance for Fund 10, our operating, general operating is three point nine million, or it's about thirty-nine percent of the annual budget. The fund balance for Forty, Fund Forty-Six, which is our long-term capital improvement, is two hundred and twenty-three thousand. Fund balance for Fund Fifty, or food service, is three hundred and twelve thousand, close to three hundred and thirteen thousand. And then our fund balance for Fund Eighty, or community services, is quite small, and we do that intentionally because we are loving for those dollars, and we want to keep that down. It's just about five thousand dollars. Want to speak a little bit about our Fund Fifty food service fund balance because that is quite high. We realize that. DPI has actually contacted us about this, saying that, you know, it's, it's too high. They're not comfortable with that dollar. And all they want is it spent down. So we are actually looking at purchasing some new equipment this year in the kitchen. We have purchased a new salad bar at the elementary school that is going to be lower for our students, so they'll be able to reach into it. We've purchased some additional lunch tables at the elementary school for our 4K students that are lower to the ground for safety reasons. We have hired some additional staff this year in food service that are trying to cut this balance down. So. Those are just some examples of things that we're using to spend that money down. So when you see new equipment coming in, that money is actually being spent, or we already have that money. So we're not going out seeking money or taxing for that money. So. All right. Any questions about fund balance? All right. So I'm going to jump into my letter B, which is pack of pups, as an update. So we are in week four of operations. We currently have thirty-five children enrolled, and capacity is forty-five max. You can see the age breakdown. So we have four children right now under age one, five between ages of one and two, seven children between ages two and three, nine children between ages three and four, six children between ages four and five, and then four children, which we consider school age, so between five and twelve. We are accepting applications. They do not have to be enrolled full-time. That is one of the questions we get a lot is, do you do part-time childcare? We do. So best number would be to call right there, nine two zero eight four seven three nine zero eight to get your children.
Four eight seven.
Four eight seven, thank you, to get your children enrolled. Katie Horn, who will be speaking here in a little bit, she is taking care of all enrollments and scheduling, and she's doing a wonderful job, so she can point people in the right direction with that.
Are we expecting that maybe to go up a little bit for this summer?
I do, I do. I think we're starting to get some summer applications in already.
Okay.
Update on staffing for pack of pups childcare. So we have obviously one childcare director, Ms. Katie Horn, and she's overseeing the day-to-day, day-to-day operations and scheduling. We have three full-time childcare teachers and one part-time childcare teacher currently. We do have a posting out there right now for more teachers. They have to be certified or licensed with the state to be considered a teacher. I'm excited to share that we are hiring a full-time high school graduate, so just graduated yesterday from here in Elgoma. She is taking all of her courses through Ms. Bologna's class here, and will become a certified teacher assistant. So she cannot be alone with the students, but she can be an extra set of hands. So we're excited to see that come to fruition here. We have added a custodian that cleans three hours a day. She comes in at four in the morning and cleans the facilities, makes sure it's ready for when the students or children and staff come. And then right now, our meals are being prepared up here at the middle school, high school, and they're being brought down to the building. That's current, during the school year. In summer, we're looking at preparing the meals on-site at the kitchen that they have. So. I just want to talk briefly about the billing. So we are billing bi-weekly, and we're using a system called ProCare. It's a wonderful system that families can do all their billing or pay their bills online. We use it for signing in and out students and staff. So when they arrive in the morning, and when they leave in the afternoon or evening, we use it to record all their daily activities of the children. So when they have meals, when they take their naps, when they're doing their bathrooming. And then communicate, communication with parents, they see it in real time. We had a student today, or a child that today that had what looked like to be pink eye. And so we were able to snap a picture of it, send it to mom instantly. It shows up on her phone, and she's able to communicate then with, with the staff. So.
Does each room have tablets for each one like that?
Yes, each room has a tablet assigned to them. Many of the staff use it actually on their phones, too. So. All right. The last thing I just want to talk about is our graduating class of twenty-three. We had high school graduation yesterday. It was very well-attended in the fieldhouse. Sixty students received their diplomas. Of those sixty students, I broke down kind of what their plans are after high school here. Four are going into the military. We have three entering the Marines and one into the Navy. We have twenty-four students attending a four-year college that have been accepted. We have twelve students that will be attending a two-year technical college and have been accepted. And then we have fifteen students that are going straight into the workforce, two students that are undecided yet, and three students that are part of our foreign exchange program. So. And then we had scholarship night last Wednesday, and happy to share that we handed out over fifty-seven thousand dollars in awards or scholarships for our graduating students. Very proud of all of them and what they've accomplished. So. And that is all I have.
That's a lot. Any questions? Okay, we'll move on. Elementary principal's report. Katie.
All right. I will start with my usual bright spots for the month. So our main bright spots include wrapping up our spring concert series. So that's for grades four K and through four. We held our 4K and kindergarten, and then they also have some activities that the kids did with their caregivers who came with them. So a huge thank you to Mrs. Shaker for all of her work this year in planning them. And then, of course, for the teachers for assisting with all of the projects and parent communication and things like that. We also celebrated staff appreciation week two weeks ago, and it was just a really good time for us to reflect on all of the support that we have gotten from caregivers, families, community members, the school board for the wonderful lunch. The PTS has supported us. They always spoil our teachers, especially during Teacher Appreciation Week. So a huge thank you to them. Louis Yorki Juicery surprised us with some goodies. Nicole A. Bank. Louis Yorki Juicery surprised us with some goodies, Nicole A. Bank made goodie bags for us. And then just an overwhelming amount of support from parents and kids who made cards and burt flowers and gifts and homemade things of all different kinds. So we were feeling very grateful for that this month. Earlier this month, a team of us did submit a grant to DPI. It's the State School-Based Mental Health Grant. So involved in that was myself, Marie At, Haley Vasky, our school psychologist, and then Casey Holloway, the, Casey Holloway, the guidance counselor at the high school, and then Angie Kanderski, the guidance counselor at the elementary school. So this grant would provide us with additional funds to provide mental health opportunities for students and for staff. So that was kind of something new for us. As we wrote the grant, we focused on a couple of different areas. The first area was starting to implement a, like, universal, just some universal instruction and some language around anything related to socially-emotional well-being. So anything from communication to problem-solving to conflict resolution at all different age levels. So we requested some funds to put towards that. We are going to be doing some work with community circles next year, so that kind of ties into just that, to building classroom community. So we requested some funds to provide teachers with different materials to support that as they work towards implementing that in their classrooms. We also talked about the importance of having a district-wide mental health team to kind of spearhead all this, because it was a lot of work and it will continue to be a lot of work. And we just want to make sure that we are compensating those who are giving extra time outside of the school day and during the summer to work on that. And then lastly, one thing that we are very excited about is offering additional mental health support initiatives for staff. So whether that be support groups or like personal development kinds of things, we just have a lot of different ideas on how we can also support our staff so that they in turn can better support the mental health of our students. So yeah, really excited about that. I don't think we'll hear back until midsummer, I believe, but we did request about seventy thousand dollars to use over the course of two years. So fingers crossed, we'll see how that goes. And then lastly, just a few dates to share coming up this week as we wrap up the school year. We do have the PTS-sponsored Envieda Bash scheduled for this Wednesday from three to six P.M. Games, inflatables, music, food, just everything. So everyone's welcome to attend that. We are still holding our end-of-the-year award show on Friday, and that will start at eight-thirty A.M. Four K graduation will take place at one o'clock P.M. And then sixth grade promotion will take place at ten o'clock A.M., all on Friday. We decided to keep all of that with, even with adding a day after Memorial Break, because we just felt like families had plans and just in case, wanted to make sure to wrap up the year when everybody was, when we knew everybody was present, so.
And our sixth grade is at Camp Unalaya.
Sixth grade is at camp. Fifth grade's going to Bay Beach, going to the park, we're going all over. It's really fun.
And fairly decent weather as well.
Yes, very nice.
Any other questions for Katie? Okay, are you going to be giving the school nice call?
So Mr. Robertson could not be here, he's at Camp Unalaya with our sixth graders. He just wants to say how proud he is of our seniors for all they've accomplished and wish them all the best at the next chapter of their lives. Softball and baseball have been seeded. Softball was awarded number one seed in the WIAA Regional Tournament. And somewhat of a surprise this year is the fourth seed that the baseball team was awarded. The baseball program has been making some great progress over the years and took a real leap forward this year with how they're doing, so. The last thing he has is Tegan Lutkey's advancing to national Future Business Leaders of America, or FBLA, competition. She's gotten some really nice local press, both N E W Radio Sports and Kiwanee County Star News have covered her story. So Tegan will be competing in June twenty-seventh through June thirtieth in Atlanta and will be accompanied by Ms. Baumann, our business teacher, so. Very exciting.
Okay, Pathfinder, El Goma Venture Academy report, Katie.
I will start with AVA. They have their community mural painting on Friday, which is awesome. I guess all you guys love at one point.
I filled a couple rocks. Yeah, it was wonderful, yeah. And the weather turned out beautiful for that.
I think it took me there a lot, but when I was there, it was just awesome watching the kids in the community just come together and talk about why they chose what they chose, and the mural is awesome, so. Get a chance, definitely go take a peek at that, because, I mean, it was a year-long project for our kids that planned it, and the payoff was pretty, pretty great. Like Bob said, we had our project showcase on Wednesday night last week. There were twenty-four projects that were on display at the kids' shows to showcase. And I was really impressed with the turnout this year, which was really great. There were staff members there, there was community members there, parents. So it was really great to see, and the kids definitely like to be able to showcase the things that they've been working on this year, so. That was awesome. They had their camping trip. The only complaint I heard is that it was too short, so. I think that it was kind of their introduction to camping trips, so they only did a one-nighter. But we did purchase like everything that we need for future camping trips. So in some of the end-of-the-year meetings that we've been having, the kids are talking about wanting to go to the U.P. in camp or try something a little bit harder and a couple more days added on. It did rain quite a bit, so they were definitely soaked and it was cold, but yeah, the only complaint I really heard is that it was too short, so. It'll definitely be going probably early September when it's not too bad outside. And they suggested going the last week of school as well, just weather-wise, so. That went really well. We've been changing up our end-of-the-year meetings this year to make them more student-led. Last year it was just parents and us usually. The kids didn't really show up for end-of-the-year meetings last year, so this year we made it a requirement for the students to show up and lead the discussions. So you've been doing more of a roundtable, which has been awesome for, I guess, also as advisors and for kids to just be able to show their caregivers everything that they have been doing throughout the year and the progress they've made and some of their failing forward moments. I think the coolest thing I heard so far was today with one of our students, they said the thing they're looking most forward to next year is failing more. Because they felt like this year they didn't push themselves enough and they want to fail, they want to be able to learn from their failures. And I was like, that speaks volumes. And that was one of our eighth graders, I was like, wow. So I think that was just a real testament to kind of some of the things that AVA is teaching our kids. Childcare just did a good job covering it. We are taking applications, however, with that comes the need for more staff, because we can only have a certain amount of students per staff member. We have a waiting list right now for our zero-to-two and H group, because we can only have four babies to one staff member, and we already have four babies in there, and I think I've got three or four on the waiting list already, so. We've been had moms pop in that were due the next day wanting an application to get on a list, so. That'll be interesting, but yeah, it's, we just need some more staff members so that we can continue to take in more kids.
I'm assuming we have jobs posted?
And then Pathfinder, end-of-the-year wrap-up, we had five kiddos who graduated yesterday, which was great. And then they're just, Lexi has the kids do a goal-setting at the beginning of each year, and then they come in and order where they're at with their goals. And the kids who meet their goals by the end of the year get to go to Bay Beach, or by the Bay Beach on Friday.
So as far as the end of the year for the Venture Academy, I'm assuming that the different standards and everything that people or the students that are in satisfactorily met the, the goals that the advisors had.
Yeah, so the parents can see, Friday, each kid will be sending home their end-of-the-year report. So the parents can see on that report all the standards that they met and then whether they were basic proficient or advanced in each of those standards. So they do not get traditional letter grades, but they get basic proficient or advanced. And so the parents are able to see what they did, which standards met the projects, and then what area they were technically in. The high school transcripts, they do get a GPA, so the parents can see where they're at GPA-wise as well. The cool thing about this year is that we had three kiddos apply for college and one to the Rising Phoenix Program, and we haven't had any pushbacks from any of the UW schools. All the transcripts that we sent in have been sufficient and the kids have gotten accepted into the colleges. And then our junior got accepted into the Rising Phoenix Program, so. You know, it was something that we also were questioning, like, how is this going to work? But we send a cover letter with their transcripts, kind of explaining who we are as a charter school and what we do and how it's project-based, and we haven't even been contacted by anybody to question anything, so.
Katie, I can't remember, do the Ava kids, do they get, take the same tests that they're? Okay, I, I can remember if they did or not, okay.
Yeah, that's part of ours, so we have to report to the state. We have different goals for the school every year, and that's part of our goal-setting is some of the state, state tests that they have to take. I don't think the A C T, the board is too secure.
You know, because we're testing our kids to death almost, so.
Yep, they did all the ones.
They are.
Any other questions for Katie before we move on? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Marie, Special Ed Wellness Report.
I invited Whitney Ebert today, just to give us a, you know, quick El Goma Community Wellness Center update. It's been a while since we've done an update on what the Wellness Center is doing, so I thought she could just provide us some information.
Thanks, Marie. Yeah, so I'm here to talk about, I guess, mainly the current usage of the Wellness Center and then kind of currently what's going on down there, so. All right, so currently we have five hundred and fourteen active members. And then these are kind of broken down by age groups, so. Just looking at it, so the sixty-six, the seventy-five is our highest age group. It was like, oh, there was percent sign there, they must not have shown up on the thing. But anyways, that one was like twenty-seven point four percent was the sixty-six to seventy-five age group. The next highest one was fifty-six to sixty-five, which is the, I believe it was blue. I don't know why all the percent sign on there, but anyways, they're all like pretty similar after seventy-five, as you can see. Going on to the next graph. These are kind of broken up by our membership code. So the membership code is basically like a different category when someone signs up for a membership, so they're kind of all along the bottom there horizontally. So like our staff, student, Active and Fit is one of our insurances. ASD is El Goma School District, Chamber of Commerce, City of El Goma, college student. Continuum of Care is a program with Door County Medical Center. Then it's Door County Medical Center, Family, Individual, Renew Active is also another insurance. Scholarship, Senior, Senior Family, Silver Sneakers is another insurance that we have, and Veterans. So as you can see, a lot of them, the highest one has up to, it's just over twenty-five percent, is under Renew Active, which is the type of insurance that a lot of the senior citizens are using. The next highest one is Families, so there is a lot of more like family memberships over individual ones to you. And then also, ever since the three staff, El Goma School District staff membership thing, we actually had like sixty-seven staff that are a current active membership, so that's pretty cool. Going on to the next screen. These are our corporate counts that we currently have within the community. So Door County Medical Center, City of El Goma, and ESI. So this is an area where you can always have more businesses throughout to, it's kind of an incentive that they use as the employer. And then these are our current Wellness Center membership rates. So individuals are thirty dollars a month, kind of go by all the monthly ones here. Family is fifty dollars a month. Senior is fifteen dollars a month, and that's anyone sixty-two and older, senior family, college student, and our daily pass. This is a little screenshot from our current flyer. This is all the insurance that currently covers our membership in the Wellness Center. So on the bottom there, Silver and Fit, Renew Active, Silver Sneakers, and United Healthcare is under the Renew Active that was on the previous graph. So again, this is another area, we have had a few different insurances that some people have that we could potentially look into, like I know Blue Cross, Blue Shield is a common one, just to make it more accessible to everyone out there, so. All right, these are our current programs and services, so. Different areas that we have kind of are, obviously like the strength and conditioning area, cardio, pickleball, basketball. Our group, we have group fitness classes that we have going on. So we have currently, we have some chair exercise classes and special ed, like, exercise classes. We are looking at having some sort of like HIIT exercise class. I know there's been some people asking about that one. So I'm looking at targeting that one in fall, so I'm actually currently like working on my personal training certification, so I just want to like obviously make sure that's all spread away and everything before that. However, we do have another personal trainer, Josh LaVoy. He is always interested in working with other clients as well. And then, so new member orientation, this is kind of just something that any new member that's, needs a little tour around the Wellness Center, anything, is something that we offer to all of our new members. And then also, I think a pretty cool thing that we have offered in there, connecting to the school, is with our school district school nurse and then our licensed athletic trainer that also is available in there if needed. All right, so lastly here, some like updates. These are some few things kind of in the works that are going to be happening soon. We're going to have an annual preventative maintenance check on all of our machines next month, actually. So that'll be something that we'll be having. We work with Direct Fitness Solutions that comes and does all this service, technician, all that, service help on the machines, so they're going to be coming every once in a while. Another update yearly is we've been ordering one to two machines a year, kind of like rotating them on a rotational basis, along with like a smaller equipment each year. Again, it's a good change, but that's kind of what it's currently been doing the last few years. Another thing that we're looking at is looking at new flooring in our multipurpose room. That was just something that, it's a little bit smaller space, a little bit easier to potentially get new flooring in there. Sometimes in the summer, I guess, it gets with the humidity, it's kind of slick. We have a lot of like chairs and our senior citizens are in there. So it would, that's something that we're looking into currently. Another few summer opportunities we have is, these are classes, so Speed and Strength and Speed and Agility, that is for elementary, middle, and high school students that we have going on in the summer. So I'll be involved with those, along with some other coaches. Andy Kropkremmer, the Thiat teacher, so it'll be kind of fun to have a few different opportunities. Last year we only had like Speed and Strength in the morning. Obviously, you know, students are working and whatnot, so the Speed and Strength will be in the morning. We have Speed and Agility in the afternoons as well, so kind of have a few different opportunities, and should be able to make one of them, so. All right, that's all I have.
What, are we, we have something coming up, some kind of a basketball that's being?
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Which I'm hoping is well-attended, because that will bring a lot of people in to our area to see the facilities that we have, but.
Yeah, so, has anyone ever heard of twos, threes, threes? Yeah? Anyway, it's like a shooting competition, so I guess there's like, I've never been to one, but there's like somewhere around the state, and they kind of, we're just going to be a host location, so it's going to be in the high school gym. As of right now, it's just going to be in there, we don't have a ton of people registered currently, but it's kind of something that you can travel to around the state. And obviously, it's basketball's in the off-season right now, so you can work on that and it kind of, competition between- And obviously, it's basketball's in the off season right now, so you can work on that and it kind of, competition between others in the state, all different age groups, it's actually open to every single, uh, anyone, so, yeah, pretty cool opportunity. It's this Saturday at eleven AM, so.
What, is it this, is it this weekend? No. Oh, yes.
Yeah, it's Saturday.
Okay. I thought it was later on in, in June, but, okay.
Yeah, it, it's potential that there could be a whole site again, um, but, yeah.
Um, the other things that I have on here is just a quick little plug. We've got two vacancies currently for our special education team next year. Um, a middle school, high school, special education teacher, which we're in the process of doing interviews for. And then we also have a pair of professional vacancies. If you know anybody that would be interested, please encourage them to contact me to apply. Just a little plug for the night. Um, the other thing, I provided you all with a copy of this annual review of health services. Our special nurse, Tori Schmidt, put this together recently and asked me to share it with you as just a synopsis of all kinds of data that she's collected throughout the year. From how many students are immune to that, immune, that's what I thought, immunists. And what the compliance percentage is to some of our screening programs from vision and hearing, um, and whether or not that led to a referral for additional, um, vision and screening, or vision and, I cannot talk today, vision and hearing, um, needs. How many times students visited the health room was kind of interesting. She documents any time a student comes to see her, one of the secretaries, or first aid, or a stomach ache, a headache. We have documentation on all of that.
Looks like they were pretty busy.
Yeah. Very busy, and she also wanted to, um, commend the secretaries greatly. I know Shelley is amazing and Susan up here, they do an excellent job helping with that when Tori's at the opposite building. She included medication, information, happy to see there's zero medication errors listed. She included information on our Bridging Brighter Smiles Program as well as, um, flu shots for both students and staff. We were able to provide opportunities where that happened at school if, um, parents chose to sign their children up for that or if staff members chose to get those, um, as well as trainings and protocols and her individual health plans. Um, just a really great synopsis of everything this year, so.
Go through your own.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Looks like we are down to committee reports. The safety committee met, and that would have been Chris reporting off on that, I believe.
Correct, yeah.
So, um, does one of the other members of the committee wanna sort of?
Who's on there?
Uh, Chris? Okay, so we met originally on May second, um, to discuss, uh, Q and A County Sheriff's Office, providing the school resource officer for twenty-three and twenty-four school year. At that time, we needed some more information from the sheriff's department on some questions that we had. So we made no recommendation or whatever at that time. We had another meeting on May ninth, and at that time, um, we had recommended from the sheriff's office, twenty-four hours per week, uh, for the school year, um, with one officer, and that can be split up kind of however we decide where. That wasn't our original kind of goal with that, um, being that this officer would be split with LC. Us picking up basically that third day or however you wanna say it, gives us more flexibility on hours and times where we can, because she'd be a full-time officer in that position. So if we chose her to be here instead of two hours each day, it could be mornings, um, being as a part-time officer, SRO, we didn't really have much say in it. Jessie reached out with Luxembourg and they're kind of flexible with, because she would be more in the grade school. So if we wanted her for two or three hours, whatever in the morning, here every day, however, but that'll be determined. So I guess our recommendation was to go ahead with the twenty-four hours a week with the, uh, Q and A County Sheriff's Department for the, uh, twenty-three and twenty-four school year.
And I don't think we are looking at that tonight because I think, does it still have to be approved at the county level or something?
Correct.
If I'm understanding that correctly, it's gonna be like, like a forty-hour position split up between us and Luxembourg?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And that would put us under what we budgeted for, for that particular position.
Oh, okay. Nice.
All right. Any other questions on that? And then, uh, Policy and Practice Committee meeting met. We did how many policies this time, Jessie?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four, yep.
Um, there were, I'm sure, a nice packet in each of yours for events that we felt, um, warranted the scrutiny and I'll, as always, quickly, you know, there's this many that we didn't copy for everybody because of the minor little changes in them, um, save, save a little paper, so I'll just quickly go through that. Under Facility Security, um, seven four four oh, we just, um, allowed, we authorized in that one. The only change was the district administrator was authorized to, um, install various things that would be necessary to protect the health, welfare, and safety of our students. So it was just giving him that authority. Seventy-four sixty, Conservation of Natural and Material Resources. There was just one new X under ensuring proper recycling of reusable materials, which seems sort of like a no-brainer. Seventy-five ten, Use of District Facilities was simply taking out that line for administrative guidelines because we do not have that. Seventy-five forty point zero one, Technology Privacy, um, the content was not changed at all. Neola just simplified it a little bit, so, um. Seventy-five forty point zero three, there was one last paragraph designating the district administrator and the technology director, um, for initiating, implementing, and enforcing the policy. And then the next one, seventy-five forty point zero four, Staff Technology Acceptable Use and Safety, just matched the student technology, that last little paragraph. District Issued Student Email Account, seventy-five forty point zero seven, we previously done it, um, for, um, staff, and this was just, um, the students to match the staff one, so there was not a change. Eighty-one twenty, Volunteers, we added, um, the Veteran Volunteer Requirements for recognition from the District and Department of Veterans Affairs, we just added that line as an option. Eighty-two ten, The School Calendar, um, we just changed that to District Administrator. Eighty-three oh five, Information Security, um, that was simply changed from, um, Annual Risk Assessments to Periodic Risk Assessments Based on the District Administrator's Judgment. Public Records, eighty-three ten, um, we just designated the district administrator as the custodian. Eighty-three fifteen, Information Management, we just once again removed that statement of administrative guidelines since we do not have them. Um, eighty-three thirty, Student Records, um, we removed the administrative guidelines. Eighty-three ninety, Animals on District Property, we added Therapy Dogs as an option. Eighty-four oh five, Environmental Health and Safety Program, just a paragraph on Indoor Environmental Quality Plan was added. Ninety-seven hundred point zero one, Advertising and Commercial Activities, um, it removed the administrative guidelines. And that is kind of all of our little changes that we did not copy for you. Were there any, I did not bring the other ones thinking Anne would have it, but were there any questions or concerns on the things that were in your packets? For those of you who are not on the, anybody?
Okay, then we will be asking for.
Oh, I do have a couple of questions, but I was gonna wait for when it came up on the, you know.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. It could be either time.
Okay, let's keep going.
Give me a time, a chance to breathe in between. Okay, and the final committee meeting was the Finance Committee meeting. Pat, that would be you.
Finance Committee met on May seventeenth, Barb was there, myself, Anne, and Jessie, and Mary Blaha from Baird. She's been helping us, um, with the finances since we, um, our finance manager left. She's been absolutely phenomenal. Um, we talked about, um, what we had to do to close off this budget for the, for the coming, this last, at the end of June. Um, we talked a bit about our, our fund balance and the fact, and the fact we're gonna be buying a school bus. That's, I would call it almost brand new, it's, what, a year old with very few miles on it? But we'll be paying that out of Essar funds, so that'll be good. Um, we talked a little, we talked extends, kind of extensively about the, um, impact of vouchers, private school vouchers. And I wrote this down because I, it was really eye-opening. In twenty-twenty, in twenty-one, twenty-two, our private school vouchers were fifty-five thousand four seventy-six that went out of the district. But we never know where they're going. The DPI just sends it to us and we have to send them a check, we don't know.
At the end of the year.
At the end of the year, we don't know what school they're going to, who the students are, we never knowing that. So it was fifty-five thousand four seventy-six, twenty-one, twenty-two. In twenty-two, twenty-three, it went up to two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand five-hundred-and-twelve dollars. That was quite a big jump. Of course, we do have one of the parochial schools in town that entered into the private voucher program, so I'm assuming that's where the majority of that is going. What else, we talked about, um, keeping our fund balance stable. If we don't keep our fund balance stable and, um, we will watch, and that nice, healthy fund balance that we have, if we don't keep the mill rate stable, that healthy fund balance will dwindle down to almost nothing. Um, so we talked about that. We did pay off some, a debt, it was being paid off early, um, so that will free up some money. But, um, that's a good thing, but we, I can't stress enough about keeping that mill rate stable. And we voted to, hm, there's a, you have to vote on the preliminary budget. We have to recommend passage of the preliminary budget, although we don't know any of the numbers. Nobody could run their house, you couldn't run your farm the way schools are expected to run financially. So we're recommending that, and we're also recommending, um, to, to approve the revisions to this budget, to, to close it out at the end of the year. So, and then we talked about the manager, the business manager's position, we're gonna partner up with CISA seven. I think they have, I think he was a business manager at?
In Howard's Grove.
In Howard's Grove. And now he works for CISA seven and, and I, we're the, I think we're probably the only school that's doing this right now, so we're probably gonna be like the guinea pig on this. But I'm sure that there are a lot of small school districts that are look, thinking, okay, this could work for us because, you know, that's a lot of money between your salary and your benefits, so.
Yeah, but you don't have to pay out when you do this.
You don't, you don't have to pay out, so if you, if you.
And Mary had met with the group, Mary Blaha.
Yes, she speaks very highly.
To us and.
Yep.
And felt that, that this could be a very valuable option.
Yep.
And, um, and long-term, you know, not just a stopgap. She was feeling very positive about it, so.
Yeah. It was a good meeting.
We can try.
Yeah, it's a good meeting.
Is that Ryan Walters we'll be working with?
Did you meet him or?
Okay.
Okay, good. That's very good. Any other questions for Pat? Okay. Current COVID statistics.
Zero.
And items for discussion, possible changes for COVID mitigation practices, that was your request, Pat?
Yeah, um, the reason I asked it, not the practices, well, I, I pulled out the policy and I was looking at this, I thought, okay, so this is a little bit, um, in light of everything that's come out, this is a little bit old, um, about universal masking. Well, now, it's come out and said, you know, masking really didn't have hardly an effect on COVID at all. Um, and the physical distancing, well, that really wasn't based on anything, any science, it was just, basically, let's pick a number. Um, so, but that's.
What are you looking at?
This is from our, this is from our maintaining, this is our school district policy. But that's really not what I, because we can look at that later.
Cause that's constantly as needed, and of course, we had everything optional.
Right, but it does say that we should, at least every six months through September of this year, we need to, um, look at this. So I was wondering why we kept it on our, on our agenda every month? For changes to COVID litigation, mitigation processes. I mean, I don't really think we have to anymore, I think that would give the public a little reassurance that we're not gonna change something without them having any input, which.
That's what you're saying, okay.
Yeah, which is, which is what they need to have. We need to have, that's part of our policy, seeking public input if we do change something. So I would just suggest that we just take that off.
Until, if and?
And review it, like the policy says, at least every six months, until September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. So I don't know what's gonna happen after that. Do we just not review it at all? I, I'm not sure. But anyway, that's, that's where I was coming from.
So one of the requirements of receiving the extra dollars is you have to have a mitigation plan.
And we do.
We do, right, so we can't just get rid of this plan yet, um, because we're still receiving the extra dollars.
Oh, no, I'm not saying get rid of the plan, I'm just saying I don't think we need to put it on the, on the agenda.
Sure everyone's clear that we can't get rid of the plan itself, so.
I think if we would, if Jessie, you would just keep track of where the six-month, what it requires in terms of having, you know, that we've taken a look at it, think it's still appropriate, and.
It's coming up in July, I believe, that we have to update, just review the plan.
Okay, but then maybe we can just have it on the agendas for those six months.
Every, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I don't know if you agree with me. I mean, it's, you know, in, in a way, like you say, sort of out of date at this point.
It's, it's, I found it ironic, I was at the fitness center, I was talking to Renee, and I said, she's got a whole big box of COVID tests on the shelf that the school district does free, and they can't even, they can't even give them away, nobody wants them.
I still test if I get a cold.
I've never had one in my house, I don't know.
Well, people are still dying from it, but thank goodness, it's not a big deal anymore. And we've been at zero in the school district for quite a few months, so that's, that's what we care about here. All right, discuss open enrollment applications.
So annually, we have to approve, um, you'll see as an action item, that we need to improve, approve our open enrollment applications that are coming in as well as going out. So the information that I presented earlier on the numbers, um, detail how many kids will be coming in versus how many will be going out, so.
Okay. Do we have a number that you could give me for the actual action?
Yep, so it'll be six students open enrollment in.
Six in.
And I believe there was eight that will be going out.
Any further discussion? You did a nice job of covering that in your initial introduction.
So Jessie, on that open enrollment in and out, is that, so if somebody comes for a half a day, is that considered in? Or does it have to be the full day?
It counts as a portion of the, yeah. So you get like a percentage of the total amount that you would get. Like, we have some students that are considered home-schooled.
Yep.
But they come and take BAND or special ed courses here. So you get a portion of that for the classes they take.
And that all goes into that eight or six number?
Correct, mm-hmm. And again, these numbers will change because the alternative application window will be opening up here. But for the purposes of tonight, we just have to approve the six and the eight.
Further discussion before we move into action. Okay. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, the Safety Committee meeting, May second, and May ninth, twenty-twenty-three, the Policy and Practice Committee meeting minutes of May twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, and the Finance Committee meeting minutes of May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three.
So move.
Motion made by Pat. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Chris B. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills that have been presented to us.
So move.
Motion made by Pat. Do I hear a second on that?
I'll second.
Second by Chris B. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the WIAA twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four membership.
Slow move.
Motion made by Chris B. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the food service agreement.
So move. Oh, seconded.
All right. Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Pat. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve open enrollment application, six in and eight out.
I so move.
Motion made by Jennifer. Do I hear a second on that?
Second.
Second by Bonnie. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four CISA seven contract in the amount of forty-two thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty-eight cents.
I so move.
Motion made by Jennifer. Do I hear a second on that?
I'll second it.
Second by Pat. Any questions or discussion?
Okay, just throw in there, this is not including business manager.
Correct.
This is just our annual CISA seven contract.
And one of the things I noticed on it was it has the ten to be determined. I'm not looking at it in front of me right now. And I believe that we have had some issues with that in the past. Nick is not here to verify that. But we had paid for a ten. See, I have some nodding heads over there.
Services and never received them.
Yes. So that is something that we are going to want to keep real track on that. And I don't know if it was that we just didn't book something or decide on something soon enough. But, I mean, it's a fairly significant amount of money, and we don't want to lose that, so.
And we have those days scheduled already.
Oh, fantastic. Okay.
Good.
Wonderful. Yeah, it sounds like things are really getting whipped in shape at CISA seven.
That is certainly the impression I get, but I didn't know what it was like before.
Right, so that's, that's great. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four CISA six seeds for school service agreement in the amount of three thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventy cents.
Slow move.
Motion made by Chris B. Do I hear a second on that?
I'll second.
Second by Bonnie. That is our computer program for special ed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. What I was told by Jessie before the meeting started is that, and again, it is something we discussed at the Finance Committee. We thought we had a preliminary, preliminary tentative budget for twenty-three, twenty-four, but they are still working on it. And of course, any little tidbit that they can get from the state in terms of what the budget might look like would be helpful. So we are going to table that until our June meeting. So we will be, we will be approving both the closeout of this year and the preliminary for next year at next.
Yeah, we have time for that.
Yes.
Okay.
I believe we need a motion to table it.
Okay.
I'll make that motion. We table the approval of preliminary budget for twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'll second it.
All right. So Pat and Chris B. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I need a motion to approve the new plan administrator for NICOLE Viva Trust. What does T-A-L-G-I stand for? Do we even know?
I do not know.
Okay, it's the Fund Seventy-three for OPEB and retirees. That's good enough. So they, I need a motion to approve the new plan administrator. It's the same trust that we have been doing.
So move.
Okay, motion made by Pat.
I'll second.
Second by Chris B. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need approval for FDLA to travel out of state to attend national tournament in Atlanta, Georgia, June twenty-sixth, twenty-three to July first, twenty-twenty-three.
Slow move.
Motion made by Chris B. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Pat. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the new NEOLA policies. You'll accept it, excuse me, if any of you is our.
I just have a couple of questions. On this part here, on the, on the minutes, this new, under the new policy, seventy-five-thirty-point-oh-one-V-one, what is that?
Oh.
Because there isn't a policy to match that.
There were, the things that we get in, that you then get the direct drafts of, have some things that are on that don't end up in the final draft. So things like.
Is this a policy?
No.
Okay, that's all I needed to know was a policy. Because it's missing otherwise.
Right.
Okay. And then, I had one other question. And maybe one of the gals over there, maybe Marie can help me out with that. It says on the poli, on this policy, PO eighty-three ninety-five, any, it's about regarding student mental health services. Any staff member who, in the course of providing mental health services to a student, give me an incident where any staff member would be giving mental health services to a student.
Maybe a school psychologist could be providing a mental health type service to a student.
But any staff member?
Well, they're not saying, I mean, read in context with the whole statement there.
Yeah, I'm, I did, I did.
I guess my question would be, what is, what services are we talking about? Because mental health can be so broad.
Any staff member who, in the course of providing mental health services to a student, shall report any circumstances giving rise to suspicion that the student has been or is a victim of abuse or neglect. But what, what kind of, what caught me was, any staff members, so are we talking any staff member other than maybe the trained, trained people in special ed? Are we talking about any third-grade teacher, fourth-grade teacher?
Reporting abuse is already a law.
Oh, I, I understand that. I understand that.
That's all it's saying.
About the reporting, but, but it says providing mental health services.
Yeah, so it would only be the staff members that are allowed to do that. I mean, that are licensed to do that. So it's just saying the generic, any staff member that is doing that. So that instead of, instead of listing all of the staff members that qualify.
You're saying there's a gray area of listing it as any.
Yeah.
As, like you said, that aren't certainly trained.
It's, but it's not, that's not the part of the sentence. So it's that any staff member that is doing it should do this. And so, and this, right, and the wording of this has been vetted by attorneys.
Okay. Okay, okay, I, it just, when I saw any staff member.
You're questioning the any part.
I'm talking about any part.
Yeah, but I don't.
I'd feel better if it said any qualifying. Okay, all right, that's my only question.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think it's authorizing any staff member to give mental health services. It's saying any staff member that is doing it, which obviously, we wouldn't have any staff member doing it unless they were authorized to do it, needs to report abuse. Right, but it's not giving authorization in that policy, in that statement.
Okay.
I see what you're saying. It's, the way it's worded is that gives the gray area of any.
Any, any, yeah. Yeah, but if it's gone through NEOLA and it's gone through all the legal beagles, I guess, we're, we should be good. Okay.
Yeah. All right, so I will get back to. I need a motion to approve the new NEOLA policies, seventy-four-four oh-point-zero-three, seventy-four fifty-five, seventy-five thirty-point-zero-one, that V-one.
Oh, but that's this, you said that's not a policy.
It's a, that means version one of it. So that was our cell phone allowance policy.
That was our what policy?
The cell phone allowance policy.
Okay.
So, and you said it wasn't included in the package?
I, I didn't see it. I didn't see it.
And that one got missed, I apologize for that, so.
Okay.
Basically, what it's describing is, what we currently are doing is giving allowances or stipends to those administrators that require a cell phone. Instead of the district purchasing and paying for contracts under the district, we just give a stipend to the employee.
Okay.
And the V-one was, I guess, what was throwing me off because I knew that, I mean, that's, V-one will not show up on the final, on.
The final policy?
Right. All right. Seventy-five forty-four, eighty-three ninety-five, eighty-four zero-seven, eighty-four twenty-point-zero-one. Do I have a motion?
Aye, so move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Chris B. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pat, if you want to see that one, I have.
No, no, he just showed it to me. That's what I was looking at. Thank you.
And I need a motion to approve the revised NEOLA policies, fifty-seven twenty-two, seventy-four forty, seventy-four forty-point-zero-one, seventy-four fifty, seventy-four sixty, seventy-five-ten, seventy-five thirty-point-zero-two, seventy-five forty, seventy-five forty-point-zero-one, seventy-five forty-point-zero-two, seventy-five forty-point-zero-three, seventy-five forty-point-zero-four, seventy-five forty-point-zero-six, seventy-five forty-point-zero-seven, seventy-five fifty, eighty-one-twenty, eighty-one forty-six, eighty-two-ten, eighty-three-oh-five, eighty-three-ten, eighty-three fifteen, eighty-three twenty-point-zero-one, eighty-three thirty, eighty-three ninety, eighty-four-oh-five, eighty-four-ten, eighty-four twenty, and ninety-seven-hundred-point-zero-one.
I so move.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Pat. Any questions or discussion on any of those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All of us, the motion carries. And then nicely, we have quite a few that had no changes. So I need a motion to approve the NEOLA policies with no changes, seventy-five thirty, seventy-five forty-point-zero-five, seventy-five forty-one, seventy-five forty-two, seventy-five forty-three, eighty-one forty-one, eighty-one forty-five, eighty-two twenty, eighty-three hundred, eighty-three oh-nine, eighty-three twenty, eighty-three twenty-five, eighty-three thirty-point-zero-one, eighty-three forty, eighty-three fifty, eighty-four thirty-one, eighty-four thirty-one-point-zero-one, eighty-four forty-two, and ninety-one sixty.
Aye, so move.
Motion made by Jennifer. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chris B. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry.
Motion carries. And we have nothing for fourteen. Request for future agenda items. Anything specific? Okay, hearing none. I would like a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin Statute nineteen-point-eight-five subsection CESNI for the purpose of personal matters, hires, staffing, and resignations.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Pat, seconded by Chris B. Go call, vote. Chris?
Yes.
Pat?
Yep.
Yes.